All right, it's six o'clock. Called meeting, West Dakota Water Development District to order. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If everyone could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, please remain standing with the invitation. James?
Lurt, thank you for this day. Thankfully, it's not snowing this time, but yet I still see a storm on the horizon. I think we're not getting the hint. Thank you for everybody coming and finding their way here today, that everyone can have a nice, clean conversation, and that everyone gets home safely. Amen.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the real call, please. Dan?
Here. Cole?
Here.
Berkey?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Jovick?
Here.
Rollenberg? Williams?
Here.
Mack?
Here.
Pialata?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Okay, we have a four.
All right, thank you. Next item is conflict of interest disclosure. If there's any board member that has a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda, please indicate now.
Mr. Chair, I think we skipped four for the approval of the agenda.
Oh, going backwards then? Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve?
I have an objection.
And there's a second discussion.
Number fourteen.
What is the...
I suggest we remove that from the agenda. We essentially went to a meeting a month to not have that problem.
Is there any other discussion? Yes?
I guess it's my agenda item. I thought it could be useful to have a fixed deadline so we know a standard time when to expect to be providing agenda items. So I'd like to at least discuss it. If this is something the board doesn't want to go into, that's fine, but it seems to be a valid agenda item. So my motion will stand to approve the agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
No.
We have two noes. James?
Bob.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, that moves us on to number five. Conflict of interest disclosure. If there's any board members that have a feeling they have a conflict of interest on any of the items tonight, please indicate now. Same none. Moving on to item number six, approval of the previous meeting minutes. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting and have anything that they see needs to be corrected or amended?
All move to approve.
Motion by Dan Driscoll to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. That moves us to the treasurer's report. Since our treasurer is not here, Dan, could you take...
Sure. Funds on hand, approximately $436,000. Let me see if I can change the image here. It's not getting held much. Funds on hand, about $36,000. Admin budget, we've spent $26,000. Remaining in the admin budget is $63,600 approximately. The water projects, expenditures year-to-date are approximately $42,000, which brings us to total expenditures of about $65,000. So the remaining money in the admin budget is about $63,600. Remaining in the projects budget is about $274,000. So total budget remaining is almost $338,000. So there are no questions.
I have a question. Was the admin budget recalculated to show the expenditure for the room?
No.
Okay.
So this budget was done last year.
All right.
This is kind of hard to read, but this lists all the projects and the payments, but probably the interesting part is at the bottom. I might have to do a little bit here. So if we pay off all the projects, our unpaid obligations today are about $35,000. So if you compare that to what's left in our budget, we are way under budget. So unless there are any questions?
Any questions for Dan on the treasurer's report, on the project report? If not, I'm going to take a motion to approve.
Let's see.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, we're going to have a need to provide more information for the next budget. When do we bring that up? In the meeting?
Dan sent out an email regarding the budget. We need to have that, I guess finalized by the middle, the meeting in July, is that correct?
Yeah, effectively, I need to have basically everything ready by the 23rd so I can get the announcements and the papers. We have to put it for two consecutive weeks, two weeks before the August meeting. And we decided to keep the August meeting as the budget meeting, although in theory, the budget doesn't have to be presented until, not till the end of September.
Right.
But that doesn't bleed a lot of time.
So the August meeting is the key one to...
Well, I would think the July meeting, you probably have a pretty good idea of what you're going to do.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, do we have a motion on the floor to approve the treasurer's report?
Second.
Who made the motion?
So move.
Nathan, second by James, is that okay? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. All right, Nathan, do you want to introduce our guest tonight to give a report on...
Sure. So we started looking at the, our available allocations from the Missouri River a couple years ago and thinking about the possibility of getting that water from the Missouri out here to western South Dakota. And about a year ago, just about a year ago, we signed a contract with the School of Mines for their geology and civil engineering departments to take a look at a possibility of getting that water out here. And there's a number of things that need to be considered for that, obviously, so Dr. Katzenstein has kind of been the lead on that, probably by default, I don't know. That was by design, but he's done a good job. I did a presentation recently at the hydrology conference, and I think that went very well. And part of what I like about that is basically what I call seed planting. I want to get people talking about the possibility of this happening because I think it's something that needs to happen sometime in the future, and I think the presentation will show that. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to Dr. Katzenstein to present.
So I was going to ask you, where do I stand?
You can just come right up here. They don't have a podium.
Just like anywhere, right in here?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
If you don't find, I'll move it like...
Okay, I'm pretty lively.
Okay. Fair enough. And I can't go to the presentation.
That's fine. I brought ladies and boys.
It messes up my recording.
All right. Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Jovick. So as he said, my name is Kirk Katzenstein. I'm a geological engineering faculty member here at the School of Mines, and I've been working with some of the folks, which I'll keep their names here. So like he said, this project was born out of the discussion of whether or not you all should maintain a future use permit. And so I'll talk about what we promised to do with our project and kind of where we're at at this point and where we're going. So if you want to go to the next one, please. So our team, myself here on top, Dr. Scott Kinner with the civil engineering department is helping us with the infrastructure side of things. Dr. Arden Davis, who's retired emeritus faculty with the geological engineering program, he's here, is also working with us. Mark Anderson, who I'm sure many of you know, he joined us after the project started. As we started asking him some questions, he became interested in helping us out, so he's been there as well. And as most of you know, this project was initiated by Dr. Lizzy, and he passed away last fall, so that's why we're trying to help him. So we have three students. Caleb, who's here, he's a civil engineering undergraduate, he'll be graduating here starting...
This fall.
This fall. Graduate student, I should say. And then Reagan West and Haley Nottem, which are both geological engineering students. And they have finished their, you know, help with us because they've gone on their internships for the summer. Luckily Caleb's internship is in town, so he can keep helping us to finish it off. So that's our team. So go to the next slide, please. So we already kind of touched on this, but in 1976, the board here, or the predecessor to the board, established this future use permit for 10,000 acre feet of water per year, which is about 13.8 cubic feet per second of Missouri River water. And it was deemed useful for, or at least the use was allowed for, future municipal industrial, commercial, and rural water system use. Turns out that Rapid City also holds a future use permit that's about the same age, it's much more volume, about 66,000 acre feet per year, which is about 92 cubic feet per second. So it would make sense that if, at some point, it was deemed necessary to utilize this water, if you're going to go through the effort to build the pipelines that long, why not make it have, you know, more capacity than it just is? So Rapid City would make a very obvious partner in future pipeline if necessary.
Are you sure that number is right? 66? I thought it was 16.
That's what's on the DNR website.
66?
Yep. Yeah. So in fact, the next slide has the list from the DNR website that shows that value there. And so these are first in time, first in line situations, so if there was ever to be some kind of a hierarchy here, having this early permit is beneficial also for both of these entities.
Start with them before Rapid City.
Slightly, yeah. Yep. So, next slide, please. So our project that we proposed was to do three things. The first thing was to look at kind of where Rapid City is going, population-wise. And so we made, I'll talk about this in a minute, we made some assumptions on, different assumptions to see kind of where the population growth could go. We spoke with folks around the city and got some data that they have, compared it to ours, and compared favorite list, I'll show you that here in a minute. And also documentation of current water supply sources and rights, and kind of what the maximum capacity of those might be moving forward. And then if we decide this is something that would be a future project, you know, some preliminary estimates, estimates of maybe some alignments that would be feasible, you know, sizes of pipes, pump station locations, and infrastructure that's necessary to actually bring that water out here, and some preliminary estimates of cost as well. So that's where we're going. So let's go to the next slide, please. So we'll start with the first one, so some population growth projections. We had the students look into growth curves and applying different trend lines to the existing population that we have and past population data that we have here. And so I'll show you those plots here in just a second. And then we assumed, which has been, it has held true pretty well here for the past 20 years or so, about 150 gallons per person per day, which is, allows us to project water demand moving forward if we believe our population projections. So the next slide shows our population projection curves that we used. So there's different assumptions here. I'm not necessarily going to go into the specifics of each one right now, but if you look at the different curves, the kind of the heavy dash line in the center there is our assumed value, it's kind of an average of all of our projections, and that's what we're going to use for our demand projections in later discussions in this presentation. So that's, that heavy dash, kind of, an orange or peach color, whatever it is, is our assumed population projection. So if you look at that, you know, within 20 years from now, we might have, in the region here, you know, more than 130, 140,000 people, which is, you know, quite a bit more than you might expect. So anyway, this is important. So let's go forward to the next slide. So if we change the population projection to water demand by multiplying that by 150 gallons per day per person, we wind up with population, we have water demand in cubic feet per second here. And those green points down in the lower part of the curve, which is our historic data, show where that 150 gallons per person per day assumption would plot. So it's a pretty good assumption, so we're going to use that moving forward. Now, you could argue that that would change based on more municipal use versus agriculture use as far as the ratio, but for now, we're going to make that assumption. So that's where we are at this point. So, next slide. So the question then becomes, okay, so if that's going to be our demand, how long do our existing supplies and sources of water here in the region allow us to continue doing business as usual effectively? So we looked at a bunch of published literature, including a report done by the, for the city by Burges and McDonald. There's many great USGS reports out there that discuss this kind of thing, other things, DCs, other reports that are out there as well. We had the students do what we think is a relatively comprehensive literature search. And one thing that, as we all probably know here, the supply in the Black Hills hydrologic system is greatly influenced by climate. So when you have extended periods that are drier, that can heavily impact your availability of usable water and the opposite. It's also true, if you have very wet periods, you have an overabundance of usable water. So once we have those values, and I'll show you where we got the most important numbers here in a minute, we can then compare those resources as we have currently using, as we are currently using them with the demand that we keep predicting. So that's the next one. So let's go to the next slide, please. So there's a great report by Long and Butler back in the early 2000s where, for the region here in Rapid City, which encompasses much of western Pennington County, which is of interest for this board, they were able to calculate how much water would come in and go out of the Minnolusa and Madison aquifer systems. And that's where we get the majority of our groundwater supply currently for Rapid City and western Pennington County. Of course, there's also Devon aquifers and Cameron aquifers as well. This is what we started with. And so we have, what they did was they looked at periods they deemed to be dry, periods that deemed to be kind of average climatic conditions, and periods that were deemed to be wet, to come up with ranges of available groundwater for consumption. And so that's going to be described here in the next slide, please. So they suggested that inflowing to Madison and Minnolusa from precipitation directly on these aquifers, as well as losses from stream flow, varies from approximately 44.5 to 110 cubic feet per second. And again, that's very dependent upon climatic conditions. So the 44.5 would be your dry, or both tide period, and your 110 would be your wetter type of climate. So outflow is estimated in range, from the distance beyond the Rapid City region, down gradient was estimated to be about 50 to 60 roughly cubic feet per second. And that doesn't count extraction for water use. So if you look at those values, it leaves a budget for us of a net loss of 5 cubic feet per second all the way up to 48 roughly cubic feet per second for the Rapid City region. So for this study, we made the assumption to say that, okay, based on their values for dry, average, and wet, that a budget of groundwater for consumption of zero cubic feet per second for a dry time, because we're, technically, it's actually a net loss, it could be a net loss, and then 19 for average years, and then 48 for wet years are assumed for our discussion here. So that's kind of the range of values. So that's for groundwater. We also obviously use surface water. So if you go to the next slide, if you look at Rapid Creek, which is, you know, kind of the, a good indicator of available water for use here in western Pennington County, it's the main drainage in our region here. And if you look at the percentile of 25th percentiles, 50th percentiles, and 75th percentiles of flow there, historically, those range from 43 cubic feet per second up to 83 cubic feet per second. And the lowest value ever observed for a long period of time was 31.5 back in the drought times of late 80s, early 90s. We did not go so far as to say that that is representative for dry, although that could happen again, so keep that in mind. The game fish parks say they want to have 15 CFS in the creek for fish habitat and well-being. So if you subtract that 15 from those values on the first bullet there, you wind up with consumptive surface water guides for dry average of wet years of 28, 46, and 68 cubic feet per second. So if we add those now to our groundwater totals from before, the next slide is similar to that. So what this suggests is that in a dry, as we're deeming it, a dry year, you've got about 28 CFS. This is not including, you know, the buffering that could be provided by Deerfield and Pactola, because obviously, if you have storage there, you can allow yourself to weather these storms. But a long-term dry period, this would be what you would expect from the existing systems in an average of wet values here. So what does this mean? How does this compare to demand? So the next curve, we take that population projection grid and put those numbers on there. So here's your dry budget, your average budget, and your wet budget. Okay, so here's today. So our population projection curve is this. And so what this tells you is that if we have average conditions, or even slightly below average conditions, you know, we're in pretty good shape. However, if there's a prolonged period of dry climate, particularly as we grow in the near future, our ability to sort of, you know, weather that storm a little bit easier starts. To get through those conditions is going to be reduced with time and with increased population. So I think this plot in itself, while you could get pretty scared by looking at this, this would be long periods of very dry conditions. But if we had a three- or four-year drought, and we're out here in population, this becomes more difficult to deal with, and it would involve probably some tough decisions like, you know, cutting back water use for specific, you know, some mitigation measures to help deal with this. Or it would allow us to make the case to bring water from somewhere else, because, you know, this could be a challenge here if it was a long-term drought. So next, please. So the question is that, okay, say we want to bring water from the Missouri River, how would we do it? What are the challenges? And so what we've done is we've looked at some possible alignments. The most likely and most, you know, the easiest way to get it out here would be to follow existing public right-of-ways or highways. And so we started with that. You could also utilize public land potentially, so I suggested, or we suggest here, one alignment that takes advantage of topography and allows you to kind of minimize the need for pump stations. And the infrastructure itself would be rather significant. If we just have the west Dakota, you know, 10,000 acre feet per year, it'd take about a two-foot drive to get through that. Whereas if you wanted to include all of west Dakotas and all of Rapid Cities, it would be much larger, up to seven feet, depending on the velocity you want to allow the water to travel. So then the question is, where do you put the pump station? So what we're now, we're working on better delineating those, and I'll talk about that more here in a minute, but obviously, you have to deal with head associated with the elevation change, the gain that would be needed to bring the water up here from the Missouri River. But also, you have friction loss from pipe friction, and also minor losses from bends in the pipes and that kind of thing you have to calculate. So we're currently working on that right now. Next page, please. This wouldn't be the first time that, you know, there's major pipeline systems in south Dakota. These are, this is a map of existing rural water systems, and these all have their own associated pipelines. Not all of these utilize Missouri River water, but it's not the first time that this type of thing's been considered. You notice that there's kind of the big gap out here in western South Dakota. So if you go to the next one, please, this is existing pipelines are somewhat incomplete because the Minnewachoni is not represented well on this, but I've got a separate Minnewachoni figure here in a second. This shows you, you know, pipelines with distribution lines larger than three inches in the state. And Minnewachoni actually has much more in this region here, which I'll show you in the next slide. But this would not be the first time this kind of a venture has been taken. So next slide, please. Here's a better representation of the Minnewachoni. Some of these pipelines, particularly this route through here, are relatively large, up to 30 inches in diameter. So, but they, anyway, yeah, that's the Minnewachoni system. They have, it's a little bit different purpose in Minnewachoni, they are distributing water over a broad area. Ours, in our case, would be, let's get water from here over to here and then link into an existing distribution system. So it wouldn't be kind of the same type of thing, but it would not be the first time that a relatively large pipeline was installed in this region. Similar project, go to next slide, please. Currently, if you're reading the news, the River Valley water supply project has been in work for a couple of years, and this is a large project that's similar in length and in volume of water to bring more water over to the eastern side of north Dakota. And this project has a price tag of well over a billion dollars, as would anything we would probably do as well, to do, to bring water from the Missouri River. So it obviously would require probably, in this state, some credible help to fund something like that. And those types of things take time, as you guys all know. So laying the groundwork now, you know, for something like this might be useful. Next block, please. So some potential alignments, sorry that green doesn't show up well, but this is, these are the two main routes basically that appear from Rapid City that we all know and love. And then this guy is one that takes advantage of favorable topographic conditions, so trying to keep it, we're going up and down too much effectively. So it also shortens the route. So here's the, these three pipelines in terms of a topographic profile, so you have your intake here near O'Waki Dam. Because we're following the road, you immediately go downhill, unfortunately, and then this way, you see this little drop here. Whereas this one, if we assume, well, if we're going to take advantage of topography, we might have to take advantage of hydrography as well and grab the water there instead of right there. So that's why it goes up first. But anyway, you can see how we have some ups and downs in these alignments along the roadways, whereas this one is smoother, although there's nothing you can do to avoid the Shined River, so you still have to deal with that. So that's, those are the alignments we're working on. Currently, Caleb is looking to do a bunch of pipe friction calculations and loss calculations along this red alignment, because that would seem to be the most likely place to start, to find out where the pump stations would be based on just engineering property and pipeline. So I've got the next slide talks more about that. So where we are now with that, it turns out, when you calculate both the loss, the head loss from just elevation gain that you get between here and the, from there to here, and you add in pipe friction and minor losses, your total head loss is about 4,800 feet, which is quite a bit. And so preliminary work that we're doing with the pump curves that we're working with suggests probably as many as 20 pump stations in series with, at each station, you'd have four to six pumps working in parallel to deliver just this capacity. So if you wanted to have this capacity plus that capacity, this would get much larger. So it becomes rather a large undertaking to do this. And this is similar to what they have currently for the big intake for the Minnewachoni, have a similar amount of volume to that 10,000. Next slide, please. So just some pipeline characteristics. So here we are for just the 10,000 acre feet associated with the west Dakota, future use permit. You're just looking at different velocities here. Typically, for pipe design, you don't want to go more than about five feet per second in your pipeline. So that's going to vary depending upon friction loss along the line. So in reality, probably somewhere in here for pipe diameter, and then the same for just the Rapid City volume and then for both. So this has become very large pipes, if you want to include both Rapid City and west Dakota future use. The full volume, please. This is obsolete, and I apologize, I should have taken this out for eye-sensitive. These are our old assumed pump station locations, but we're doing a better job now of calculating those. but we're doing a better job now of calculating those. The next slide, please. So our preliminary conclusions, based on average population projections, prolonged drought conditions could necessitate additional water sources in this region soon. So it, because of that, the second bullet, true distance to use permits for the Missouri River could play a major role in filling this need, and should therefore be retained and renewed, at least at a minimum at this point. And while it's expensive and would be challenging, it is feasible to bring water out here from the Missouri River, but it would, it would be a, a large cost. So that would, the groundwork for raising money for something like that would have to start soon. It would be a long process. It would not be able to be handled by ratepayers for sure, something that big. Next slide. So what are we working on now? Right now, like I said, Caleb's working on those pump station locations. We're going to try to work with both manufacturers of pumps and pipeline folks to estimate some, some rough costs. You know, this is never going to be a true number, but we're going to do our best to get, you know, in the ballpark. Other water rights closer to home, well, I can tell you right now, some of these, the Cheyenne River, if you've, if you've ever hung out down by Agastora, the flows in the Cheyenne River are highly varied, both upstream and downstream of the dam. Of course, the ones downstream of the dam are because of the dam. But I would suggest, and I would, I would submit that if we are in a situation where we're in a drought condition here, supply of the Cheyenne River is going to be minimal as well. So I think you're better off grabbing something from somewhere else. You know, we're going to, we're going to work on elucidating that better than what I just said. That's kind of where we're at this point. Upstream, upstream of the Rapid, Rapid Creek watershed, well, in reality, it's all the same water, it's all the same watershed. So, you know, moving upstream at this point doesn't really buy you much, you might be able to get some of the surface water before you lose it in the loss zones. But if you do that, then you're, you're just taking it away from the, the springs and from groundwater[727.54]
...warrant by whatever, a series of partners in the federal government up front or half bit or whatever.
We'll do our best to cover those numbers, but they're going to be broad brush.
Yeah.
And they're going to have to be at this point.
Yeah.
But you're right, there's an initial cost and maintenance.
Yeah. But again, I think as your question these comes out, the main thing again that I want people to get out of this is the potential possibility and then other things that we should be thinking about. So.
This, this, Tom was next.
Yeah, I had a few questions. When you talk to the city to get their data, how interested are they in this project?
You know, we haven't gone down that road directly yet. Basically, we wanted to see what their population projections data they have were at this point. We talked about passing it through existing treatment facilities here in town. And those don't reach up very high on this graph either.
So, just as a question, as you guys have been doing your research, have you found people that you've been asking questions, are they interested in this project or are they just kind of like kicking a can 20 years down the road?
I don't know that I can answer that, to be honest, but I think that obviously everybody has an interest in water security here, so.
And then on the engineering side, have you guys looked at how deep your pipe would have to go into Missouri just in case we had one of those droughts in the early 2000s where it was pretty much a mile wide in some spots in a lot with a 22 million acre feet?
Yeah, you'd probably have to pick it up near the dam somewhere so you could make sure that you had access to the water so you could put a different structure to deal with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, the red line represents the 80s drought, is that correct?
The late 80s, yeah. Eighty, eighty, eighty.
Do we have the data from the dashboard?
Well, there was those stream gauges. Out here then for surface water. But it's a good question.
So, red is definitely been there before, can get there again.
That's correct. Yeah.
And obviously we can go.
And in fact, red is the 25th percentile surface water flow. You could even bring that down for the worst case scenario if you wanted to, but for an extended period of time for it to be at that low, low baseline, but you never know.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Your graphs are based on groundwater and surface water.
Provided, yeah. If you remember this table.
Yeah, but it doesn't factor in the storage water.
Correct, that's right. So, you can buffer a lot of this through storage. Yeah.
I mean, there is a lot of storage water available to get through. I mean, that's the purpose of those reservoirs to get through. And they use, you know, back when the red line was there, they were using surface water.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is if you're really showing the full picture of what we have available.
It's true. So, full disclosure, and I think I mentioned this, but it's the.
Yeah, you did.
Storage. And so, we're looking at long-term trends here. Say if you have a 20-year period where you, climatic change is happening, you have less, that would, it would expunge all that.
It's probably going to push that back if you would take into account the storage water.
I did the math quickly on the napkin calculations for just the storage and PACTOla. And if you have a full PACTOla, well, operational full PACTOla.
Yeah.
And then you have no, not a single drop of water enter that and you flowed at, I forget what, I assume, a certain number of CFS, it would last like three years.
And then you're filled on top of it.
Yeah, now you didn't even build that. So, once you go there, you've got several years.
Because that, if you factor it in, that would move everything out of the way.
It would.
Yeah.
Absolutely. This was focused on long-term climatic conditions.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right. It buffers these conditions.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you clarify for me?
Sure.
Your projected arrow goes to 2180.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I, that was just a random, it goes all the way to the edge of the graph.
Oh, okay.
I was just saying that from that, from that point to the right is projected.
Okay.
I could have gone, I'm sorry.
No, I, I saw the measure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How do you sustain a long-term effort? Have, in your reading and research, there have been other projects that have had to go over lifetimes.
Right. A long-term effort, you mean to me to do?
To do this?
It's, I think, people like, boards like this and entities like the city and the county have to, have to decide it's worthwhile. I think that's the answer.
Well, Lewis and Clark, which is, that took a lot of years. I don't even know how many years, but probably 30 years at least to get that totally completed. I mean, they did it in phases.
That's right. The Minnie Wachonee as well.
Our issue would be is there's, we don't have any intermediate users. I mean, we got these real water systems out there now that are, that are being served by Minnie Wachonee or West Dakota, West River, West River Lyman.
Right.
Lyman County and those other smaller ones, but we probably wouldn't have any additional customers between the river and, you know, where West Dakota starts.
There's a lot of ag between here and there.
Well, there's a lot of ag, yeah. They're, I mean, if we were looking at that, we're looking at a lot more volume probably. And you mentioned the Brennan Reservoir, that, you know, they looked pretty hard at that for additional storage at one time.
And we have an old report.
Yeah, I remember that report.
Yeah.
Dan, could you go to the page 10, the possible alignment?
I think it's a map.
It is a map. On that.
One more.
One more. There you go. To actually hit that green line, would we then be able to branch off to various branches?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, that's, that would be a way to make your case to have access to private land would be, hey, we'll provide you with the service. That alignment requires, you know, until you get to about, what, wall, you know, all private access, which is something that probably wouldn't be easy to achieve without any help.
And that wall, that's where it turns south and goes to the Indian Reservation and they have like a one and a half inch pipe.
Are you talking about the existing Minnie Wachonee?
Yeah, existing.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say that the main spur of the Minnie Wachonee follows this alignment, but it also, it does cut this off. So, they were able to get access to private land through here. And there's two reasons why that, I think, is useful because you avoid this and it shortens it quite a bit. And so, I think that's why they did that. But by and large, they follow a lot of policy right of its own.
Nathan, are you done, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, Nathan.
The other thing to note, like we discussed after your presentation at the hydrology conference, is if we're looking at alignments, just like Bob was suggesting with branches, I think we might be better served following those public rights away in order to try to pick up those smaller communities along the way. And there are, I think, several, I don't know how many, smaller communities along the way that are in dire need of water, good quality water.
Most of them are being served now.
From?
From that huge, that Minnie Wachonee system like Goak and Midland and all.
Quinn.
The ones close to here.
They're all in real water now.
Mm-hmm.
There really isn't, I can't think of any communities, I mean, that would have, I mean, they might have 20 people there, but.
20?
Yeah, I mean, small, there's very small communities that you could possibly serve.
Well, I'm aware of three right here, Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Oh, here.
Huge need for a redundant source, City of Box Elder.
Yeah.
New Underwood, and then east of New Underwood.
Yeah.
So.
I was thinking more in terms of.
Very definite.
Getting the pipe out here.
So, anyway.
I think a lot of that stuff would have to be if there's momentum on some of this, you know, we can, we can mention it, but I don't, it becomes.
It might just be worth mentioning pros and cons.
Right, I agree with that, and we'll see that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Yes, question.
What we got, somebody from?
Would it be helpful to have?
Could you identify yourself, please?
Would it be helpful to have information on projected precipitation?
Certainly. I think that if this type of project were to be pushed to the public and pushed beyond the public's, that kind of, those kind of projections would be very, I don't know that we can ever, you know, we need to use one this project, but I think for something like this to actually happen, those would be comparable.
Any other questions? Again, thank you for coming.
I have to leave, I'm teaching a class right now, as you can tell.
Appreciate, appreciate the update, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is overview, overview of the swarms program for DNR. I have a staff member here. Dan, would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure, the topic has come up here a couple of meetings ago about the possibility of looking at the swarms program, which is administered under South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources as a possible mechanism for ancillary funding for some of the projects. We, we need to look at, talking with a couple directors, thought it might be a good idea to have an overview of that program. So, I'd like to introduce Mike Perkovich, who shared some time here at School of Mines back in the late 80s. Both ended up in water permission. So, Mike, I'll let you introduce your own position and give us an overview.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for having me here. Again, my name is Mike Perkovich. I'm the program administrator for our water and waste funding program in the department. So, been asked to give an overview of the swarms program. I'm going to go right off and admit that I'm not the most knowledgeable person in the swarms process. My predecessor, Jim Feeney, was quite involved, but he's no longer with us. So, I'm going to do my best to impart some knowledge on the program. The state has a, has a state water plan and it's broken into two components and the state water resource system, water, state water resources management system is one half of that. That's what we call our swarms component of the state water plan. And really, the swarms program, or the swarms component was put in more to address large federally authorized programs that needed significant state contributions. And these were things like the Minnie Wachonee, the Lewis and Clark watershed. There's a Sioux Falls flood control project that received a lot of money. So, again, large projects, I think for the West River Lyman Jones portion of the Minnie Wachonee project, we gave them a 12 or a 12 and a half million dollar loan. And that was spread out over several years. And we did the same thing with Mid-Deco, large loans amounts spread, or large loan amount that spread over several years. I think Lewis and Clark got about 11 or 12 million dollars and again, spread out over several years. One other project that came up on the swarms project that you're probably all familiar with was the Black Hills hydrology study. That was funded through the swarms component. And again, received money over several years. So, you know, the process with these projects was that they would identify a need. A project has to be put on the swarms list by the South Dakota Legislature. And so, they would come in with a need or an idea, kind of flesh it out a little bit. There's a list of projects that goes in front of the legislature every year. I shouldn't say that have been changed, it goes in front of the legislature in the name of the A or N to get on the swarms list. And then after that, these projects would come through and apply for funding. And that's what the Black Hills hydrology study did. They got on our, what I think it's called our list of priority projects. And then after that, when they were kind of getting some ideas and costs, they would come in and they would get money that again is appropriated through the legislative process every year. So, again, a list of a lot of projects. Well, about four or five years ago, again, Mr. Feeney kind of had an idea. He kind of repurposed the Black Hills hydrology study. And now, we have something on the, on the list of priority projects called statewide hydrology and water management studies. And in the legislature's authorization for this, it says this is for providing grants to state and local project sponsors for hydrology and water management studies to assess, model, and quantify the state's surface water and groundwater resources. Wow, that's a pretty broad umbrella of what can be done under that swarms designation. It was kind of put in that way, again, I guess, to give us a little bit of flexibility. And the idea is that at that point in time was there was a, Governor Dugard wanted, well, I think between Governor Dugard and Lieutenant Governor Michaels, they wanted to kind of look at the Big Sioux River and the flooding potential. Apparently, the story was is that they were predicting a big flood on the, on the Big Sioux River and they built a berm across the interstate down around Beersburg. And Lieutenant Governor Michaels was down there and he got up on the berm and he said, well, where's the water? The water, the water never came as predicted. So, they kind of got this idea to do this Big Sioux flood control model. And if you have a chance to, if you have a demonstration, I think you'd be, be pretty impressed with what they've done with it. But on a side, that's kind of a side note. So, that's one of the big things that we have done under the statewide hydrology and water management study. And we appropriated about 1.45 million dollars towards that. And there was a little bit of money left over and we, that's where we got the money to do the groundwater monitoring network, to replace pumps in the groundwater monitoring network. And I think we also did a nice, South Dakota geologic study, did some sort of an isotope study under this broad umbrella of hydrology and water management studies. So, I think there's potential in the swarms process to fund some studies, but I'm kind of at a place where I don't know how we do that. You know, do you guys come in for, you know, a small amount and we give that to you? We don't really have an application process. Well, we, we kind of have an application process, but it said we had to have things by October 1st. If you guys come in at October 1st, we have to have our legislation ready to go and, and it's pretty much ready to go by then. So, I think a more reasonable deadline for people to come in would maybe be July 1st. But again, I think I want to have some parameters on, on, you know, what type of projects are we going to fund? What size of projects are we going to fund? I think they got to be some sort of a project that maybe dovetails or that has some benefit for our watershed protection group. I'm just really kind of at a, can't really wrap my head around, you know, the type of studies we're going to, we would be looking at or what we're looking at because there's a lot of things we can look at under that thing. So, I think there's opportunities there. I think, you know, as a department. Jim Feeney, the other came, just to kind of pick his brain to see what his idea was on this. And he wasn't really all that helpful to me. But it also has to buy in from our Board of Water and Natural Resources because they're the ones that approve all the swarms appropriations and putting money into contract, various things. And I'm just not sure that either the department or the board wants to see kind of a haphazard bunch of projects come in. And especially if they might be something that would be duplicating something that our watershed protection program is doing through the 319 program. So, I don't know if I've really got good answers for you, other than we're a little bit in uncharted territories with this new swarms designation. So, with that, I kind of open it up to questions, maybe if I need to clarify something, I can.
Mike, what is your annual budget? How much money do you have available?
Through the, through our omnibus bill, we generally have about, I think it's averaged the last few years, about 10 and a half million dollars.
For projects.
For projects. But that is, again, we've got two components to the state water plan, the swarms designation, and then what we call our small facilities construction program. And that's where we give the grants out to, you know, some of the smaller communities to build water and wastewater infrastructure. Our swarms designation, we really have not given out much money in the last few years. We've met our, you talked about Lewis and Clark. Lewis and Clark is pretty much done in South Dakota. So, we don't have much, we don't have, we've given them all the, they were authorized for. And the list of projects is, there's just not those big projects out there. And there's, really, there's not much of an appetite for, from the federal government to undertake any of those big projects. I say that, but I mean, that's the truth. So, again, we're looking at 10 and a half million dollars. And, you know, every, every dollar we take away to put in the swarms designation is money that we take out of the consolidated budget to help some of our smaller ones. You know, kind of back in the day when we weren't getting quite that much money, you know, there might be years that we were putting money into Lewis and Clark and West River Lyman Jones in our consolidated budget, might be three or three and a half million dollars. And it's, you know, that doesn't go very far these days to trying to fund some community water and wastewater.
Nathan, you had your hand.
Yeah. So, you mentioned that you're kind of not quite sure on how to manage some of this stuff. Are the funds rollover funds or do you have to spend them every year?
If we get an appropriation, it's good for four years with the possibility of additional two years if there's something, an actual contract, somebody under contract to spend the funds.
So, one of the things, so I was a federal engineer for many years. One of the things that always troubled me was the need to have to spend the funds, right? So, you find projects that may not be worthwhile projects, but you're going to spend the money on them because you have to spend the funds. So, and I think we struggle with that as a board also. So, from my perspective, I'd rather see us wait and spend the money on worthwhile projects, things that you know are good projects, rather than being out there hustling, trying to spend the money that you take every year and give it to projects that may be marginal. I think every taxpayer wants that. They want their money spent wisely. So, that's one of the things that I try to look at when I sit on this board and hopefully our state managers program managers will do the same thing.
Well, again, we're kind of new into this. We haven't, we, I don't ever recall us having a problem where we had to spend money because we were going to lose it because we, we don't, this has never been a problem with us.
I think Bob was next.
So, do we, do you have a criteria? You said, you were mentioning you don't quite have a criteria for.
No, you know, and as I, kind of as Dan brought this to my attention, and I've had one of the other water development districts kind of talk to me about this too. And so, it's just kind of something that I'm trying to formulate in my head. And I really think that I'm going to, you know, all of our funding goes through the Board of Water and Natural Resources. And I'm going to have to have some buy-in from them and some direction from them on maybe some of that stuff too. And I just haven't gotten that.
So, do you see your organization as a coordinating body for the state, sort of? On just specific types of projects?
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, you heard one tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to cost a billion bucks. And if we put it into legislation, that's probably how you get it to move down the road. And so, let's see.
Thank you. James had a question.
I think this would be a great way to kickstart because we could submit something to swarms, even if it was only to initial the wellhead out of Missouri.
Intake.
Yeah, intake. You know, up, up to the street, you know, whatever the grade level that we need to put it at. If we get that in, you know, I'm sure with maybe even five, three or five million dollars, we can do that easy and then some, maybe even bring it up to where the first pump house would be.
Do you fund the engineering, engineering part of the projects too?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty broad brush, like he's saying. If it is true, let's say this program's in business for five to 10 years, we could feasibility without the state to get $50 million worth of funding over the course of 10 years. With $50 million of funding, even if it's a billion cost, if we get a fifth of the way or even a tenth of the way.
I guess I would, you know, I think the first, if we go down the swarms designation is you got to have a project and something to put on our priority. Now, this doesn't really fit under the statewide hydrology and water management study. This would be its own swarms designation, like the Minnie Wachonee or the Lewis and Clark or whatever. And you would have to, you would have to, I mean, the first thing would be to get on that priority list of projects. And then after that, we'd start looking for funding. But boy, I think you'd be hard pressed to have us put in a lift station that puts a line to the top of the hill and then there's no funding to go anywhere else. And that's.
That's just the intake.
Still, if you had an intake for, for nothing, it doesn't go anywhere. We'd get.
I think, I think you'd have, you'd have to have.
Right, we have to have the backup plan.
Well, we'd have to have an end identified. When is this project going to be completed?
Yeah. And.
And, yes.
180, 100 miles.
Nathan, and then you, Bob.
I think.
No, I didn't.
Did you?
Talking about Lisa the backup.
Okay. So, Nathan, and then Bob.
That might be an idea, but, and I understand, you know, federal government may not have an appetite for that. But I think a big part of what the federal government funds is, is based on politics and political muscle. We've got some political muscle now with the senior senator in being in office. I think he's one of the key players probably that has brought the new B-21 raider here to South Dakota. Would all, helped to get all the pieces in place for that. So, you know, maybe one of the things we should be looking at if we're, if we want to, you know, seriously start pursuing a large-scale project like what we're talking about with the Missouri River Water Transmission Line, would be to capitalize on that now. And the way, one of the things that the feds would look at is how serious is the state about making this happen? And if the state had funds available, significant funds available for something like that, that would probably shoot it up. So.
Going to have to have some locals somewhere too.
Oh, yeah.
We'd have to have, we'd have to have Rapid City and maybe Ellsworth Air Force Base. I know, I have one.
One last thing. Do you have a list possibly that we could pass out about what types of studies? Have you thought into what types of studies? This was kind of, that would be huge, would be the Missouri River project. But smaller studies we could have submit?
I think once I get some in front, you know, some buy-in from our board, and I think, I really think you need to lay out some sort of, you know, what, what do they want? What do they want in the studies? Do they want to look at?
And would you coordinate with the federal government on sampling studies, for instance? Because what we have at Ellsworth Air Force Base is a ground contamination threat. And I'm not sure, have they talked to you yet?
I mean, they've talked with our, our drinking water program about things as far as doing any studies or cleanup. Eric, that came to me.
Is that something that would be eligible or?
I think there would be potential there to partner with some others. I mean, that's kind of what we did at the Black Hills.
Well, that's, that's something that we have. Immediate, immediate issue right now is to clean that mess up out there. And, I mean, this, you know, the Missouri River thing is kind of a long-term thing, but we, there's a, there's an existing problem out there right now and people are, have, don't have drinking water and livestock water. And it needs, you know, I mean, they're paying attention to it, but it's, it's an immediate problem.
Yeah, but as far as cleanup, I don't know that.
Let me shake the hand for you. Dan, you have?
Go ahead, Kim, Lisa.
Oh.
First.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I really need to talk before you go.
Go ahead.
But I'm just curious, who proposed the Big Sioux project? Was it East River Water Development District or that has already been covered, the 1.45 million? Was it, was it Water Development District or an entity of the state or university?
I think it was kind of, something, if I'm not mistaken, it was an idea in the 1900s. It was kind of, took the lead on it. It was. It was. It was kind of. 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 It was. It was. It was.
So can the university acquire the funding?
Yes, yeah. That's a good question. I mean, it's, you know, like I said, dividing grants to state and local projects. I would think that that's probably, you know, eligible. And I guess that's, that's my concern. When I, you know, I mean, you start getting 20, 30 people coming in. I mean, I mean, that's a lot of staff time to try and manage all of these things. And I, and I don't know that I want to have 20 to 30 of these things coming into the year or even 20 or 30 of them under contract for, you know, four to five years. Like, you know, we get just staff time and just, I try to.
I have one more question to follow up on that. So if, if you're wanting multi-parted, like industrial, city, government, university type partnerships to come in for a large grant. Can, can you go after things that bridge some of the D-2 programs? And why I'm asking is I know previously on discussion on the board, they, they brought up water quality related things. And 319 knows some, some things, but mostly implementation, not too much reassessment. And it can't be if the, if it is associated with the stormwater runoff from the city, for example. And so if you're looking at the bacteria insurance in, in Rapid Creek as one thing associated with water quality, as maybe a, a double larger project. You would want to be incorporating the stormwater and, and the surface water. Could want to go into making this larger set. So my question is whether or not you can bridge the things that are permitted in multiple departments.
Yeah, we, we, again, through our consolidated program, we've given money to, to some of the, to the J-3, the Water Development Districts. It's hasn't been a lot. It's been like $260,000 or $500,000. You know, that's another issue for programs to go down and just go find our consolidated program. Where we have to find process. And you found it on the website, quarterly funding cycles. So there's some, some possibilities there. But I think one of the things that, that we require when we're given money out of those programs is that it's got to be part of a 319 project. You know, they have to have a project implication playing a role. So we do partner with the 319 program. And I did talk to Barry McFlower, who's, I guess, my counterpart in the watershed protection area. And, you know, just kind of wanted to pick his brain a little bit. And they're kind of going into this rotating basin approach to start assessing watersheds. And I think that right now they're the Big Sioux watershed. And I don't think they've really identified where they want to go next. But he says, you know, it could be that we come off to the, to the Black Hills. And we talked there that maybe if, you know, I mean, they're not going to do any sampling above and beyond, you know, they're kind of the, the, what do I want to say? The exotic type things that they aren't required to sample, just in the budget, right? And maybe that's an opportunity for this program to pick up the additional sampling. You know, when you've got somebody out there, you've got a coordinator working it out and doing the thing, maybe that's an opportunity for this swarm money to, again, pick up the type of sampling that the watershed 319 program can do. See that.
Does it require caution?
No, really no. There, there are very few rules in this.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Dan, Dan wanted to speak.
So I'll ask a couple of specific questions, maybe to try to clarify. So a study such as, you know, Black Hills Hydrology Study was an example. Something proposed out at Ellsworth could be eligible. What I had sent you, this idea of a swarms project for congregants of assessment of, of water quality along Rapid Creek. Uh, one such as that, right now, the hydrologic studies, statewide hydrologic studies category is an umbrella under which something like this is eligible.
Correct.
So then the next part of the process, you put together a specific proposal. You say, here is the proposal. The deadline is October 1. You said something about, well, you'd rather have it by July 1, but the deadline is October, right?
Right now, we do have an October 1 deadline. But again, if, if, say you, we'll start working on our omnibus bill in January, probably late July. And we have it pretty much put together and have to have it across the street in the October, November. So if we get bombarded with, maybe if one project comes in, we can make the adjustments. But we have three or four starting to come in and it's going to, that's why I thought that in July.
It puzzles me a bit in the night set with Vinnie, you know, several years ago, talking about a possible project and, you know, the deadline after, eh, we said, we don't know if we can get there, you know, a week later, the deadline includes the word dead. I mean, October 1 is the deadline. So I mean, until then, it can be considered. You'd rather have it earlier.
You'd rather have.
You'd rather have it earlier. So the next part in the process, then it goes in front of the Board of Water Management?
Water and Natural Resources.
Board of Water and Natural Resources. So then they, then they either recommend for or against pushing that forward to the legislature.
Correct.
And then, at that point in time, if they recommend it still, then would be up to the, the legislature to approve funding under the omnibus.
Correct.
So that, that is in essence the process. So you would prefer to have a proposal by July 1, but if we have one in by October 1, it is eligible for consideration.
That is the deadline at this point in time. Like I said, it sometime makes out there. We need the board to propose to cross the line. We've got to get it in our bill. I mean, it's, it's doable if we get one or two. But you can start getting, my concern is maybe 10 or 12, and then you're starting to try and.
Well, that, that could happen in the future, but I think for what we're looking at, I don't know. I'd be looking more.
And again, I wouldn't change that deadline now. I'd probably change it next, you know, next year, so I can start.
It's fair to be listed on the internet and, yep, right there for us to see.
Thanks.
So we had a project that we were considering DNA testing of Rapid Creek for different variants of E. coli and sourcing it. Would that be something that would be eligible under that?
Again, Luke, so broad umbrella of what's eligible. It's just, again, how many, you know, what, what's the board want to, what, what? I really need some direction from our board on how they want this to exist. Yes?
Is that board, I'm sorry, I know there was a question. Is the board that you're talking about, is it made up of all the individuals? Or is it all water and natural resources?
It's a, it's a seven-member citizen board. And we've got, I don't know if you know Dr. Gert, who minds ties, he's on our board. All sorts of professionals. I have Jean Jones, who's owns a wire iron, a wire paint person in Sioux Falls. Board Chairman Brad Johnson, he's an appraiser from Watercom. Jackie Lanning, a city engineer from Brookings. Catherine Johnson, who's in area, she's just our newest board member. Tom Bernhardt from Fort Pierce is a financial trust administrator. And Jerry Sohl from Sioux Falls was with the Avera Foundation. So truly not water, you know, not a lot of water-related knowledge on there. So it's, you know, I guess that's kind of a broad spectrum.
And people go in front of the board of proposals or does the proposal just go through you?
It'll have to go in front of the board at some point, kind of, for their, for their blessing and receiving funding or getting in our omnibus bill.
So it is present?
Nathan?
I was just going to follow up on a couple of things, or one thing, I guess. That was in a couple of questions, several questions ago. Since it was brought up twice about Ellsworth, I'm glad we got our base here. I'm very respectful of the base, but they are the ones that created that problem. So South Dakota taxpayers should not be paying for that. That should be a federal response. That should be funded through the Air Force, whoever else wants to get involved from the federal side, but not, not the South Dakota taxpayers directly, from my perspective.
This money is not South Dakota taxpayers' money that you handle, is it?
State funds.
Is it state funds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, our money, primarily where our money comes from is online, online lottery sales.
Oh.
Powerball tickets, Mega Millions. And then we also, there's a tank inspection fee. It's only a tank inspection fee where we get some money from. We get a small amount from contractors, excise tax on the projects, the large projects we fund. And, but the majority is from online vial.
Buy-in?
In the, in the tank inspection.
Okay.
So it's, yeah.
All right, well, I think we're ready to move on.
All right.
Mike, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's very informative and gives us something to think about in the future. Maybe the Rapid Creek waterfall. But anyway, thanks again. Have a, have a safe trip back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you need a tea break?
Yes.
Good idea.
Let's take five minutes. 10 minutes? Five minutes?
Five minutes.
All right, back in session. Item number 10, board approval of proposal logistics for June 11th, 1:00 PM. Special meeting for the project idea and stakeholder sessions. Mr. Driscoll.
So my motion will be to, to proceed, you know, with the logistics for this meeting as laid out in the packet. And, and I'll just give a really brief overview. Dan, what you had up there just a second ago, maybe you get back to that. Could you scroll down just a little farther to where the wording for the invite is as follows? So the, kind of the key ingredients, you know, as charged at our last meeting, our planning committee met and the logistics we proposed that are that it will be on June 11, which is our regular date, the, the second Tuesday, that it would be at 1:00 PM instead of 6:00 to, to accommodate the stakeholders that would be invited. We essentially proposed treating this as a, a special meeting for the two primary topics. Basically a project idea listening session and then us followed by a stakeholder session so that we could in essence abbreviate our, our agenda and dispense with some of the things like approval of minutes from the previous meeting and, and basically dispense with regular meet business. You know, basically just accommodate the stakeholders that, that would be there. So the packet contains wording for an email invitation that would be sent out, I guess, with what Dan is showing there. If we scrolled down, it'd be at the outdoor campus. The proposed agenda items, they're, they're listed in your packet. But we would get rid of treasures reported if you could keep going. No other business. And basically items nine and 10 are the basically listening session and roundtable session. We would propose excluding items from directors, items from admin. Keep scrolling down, items from public, since we'll have the public involved throughout. That would be the wording for the, the invite. And then it's followed by a, a list of entities to whom we would be sending this out. So with that as overview, you know, my motion will be that, that these would be the logistics for our June meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
Can I make a substantive motion that we table this?
Just second.
I'll second the motion.
Nine second. Any discussion? Nathan?
I'm going to go on record again that I think this is a bad idea. I don't think it's our job to hustle up projects. Again, this is exactly what I saw when I was a fed. And I think it's a, the way the federal government approaches its business. It goes out and looks for ways to spend the people's money. I don't think that's our job. I think it's our job to evaluate things that come before us and look for wise ways of spending money that come before us. Not to go out and find ways to spend money. I don't think that's why we're here.
Jim?
How many rules are we talking about suspending to have this meeting? Western notification time between meetings. We're talking about changing the number of meetings we're holding, which in our bylaws, we changed it to 12. So we'd have to suspend the bylaws, suspend notification, and then we're going to tell basically the public not to show up. Because unless you're going to advertise it as well as a special meeting in the paper, so John Q. Public, who is at work all day, who you're almost trying to eliminate now, is not invited. All these entities are fully welcome to come to our board meetings now. We're not telling them, you can't unless you come this day. But we're going to go out of our way to tell the public they can't on this one? It does not seem fair whatsoever.
Now, that's, oh, that's, that's what the committee came up with. And that's, that's why we're having discussions. Is there any other discussion?
But like I said, how many bylaws are we going to break during this?
We're not breaking any bylaws.
We have 12 listed meetings in our bylaws. We actually changed it last year so we could have 12.
This meeting is going to be our regular meeting.
Look, then you're talking about skipping the June meeting.
No, this is a June meeting.
Right, so we're not going to have a regular public meeting?
The public's invited to this meeting.
But only during the work hours?
During those times.
Yeah, we're going to suspend all regular meeting business? Is that in the bylaws to allow us to do that?
I don't think it is. It's rest in the bylaws.
I, I think somebody ought to read the bylaws before they just guess.
We did look at the bylaws. Nathan?
How, how is the public invited to this? I've heard that twice now. So the public is invited to this. How, how is the public invited? How is the, how is the John Q. taxpayer going to be advised?
It'll be on the website as a regular meeting.
But we're going to write special invitations to these groups.
We're going to send invitations to those stakeholders.
Why aren't we doing the same for everybody else? We're talking about special privileges now.
Any other discussion?
Can you put an ad in the, one of Williams, I was so sorry. Can you put an ad in the paper so that the public knows that this is going to be? Because there might be some people that you did, I don't know who you're in the invite list include. There might be some other Rapid Cityans or something that might like to know. So you could put like ads in the papers where they know. But nobody would know that this meeting would be going on. You change the time, they know.
Change in time, this is.
And location, which we have to.
And location, which we've been doing.
And then we have to vote on when to go back.
We, we, we've changed locations twice.
So you put it in the paper and how, how do you get an advertisement besides on the website? Because you're setting up.
Just, just the normal way we advertise our meetings.
Because you're setting up personal communications, right?
The public's invited to this meeting.
Well, they don't know about it.
How do they know about this meeting?
It's your normal meeting, your large.
How do they know about this meeting?
It's in the minutes.
Steve?
Dan's, how do we normally? We've changed the meeting place several times. And we can, and I've read the bylaws, we can do a special meeting, that's not the issue. But how do we normally, we moved from where we were last time to from the garage to here. And now we're just moving to another location. How did you notify people from the garage that we're having a meeting here?
Well, we, we have it on the website, the notice of the next meeting. And I also have, when people sign in and they put their email on the sign-in sheet, they, they will get an email indicating.
So we didn't do anything special? We just put an ad in the paper? We just said we're going to have it here? we're gonna have it here, we did the normal check, so I think we just do what we normally do.
We did have to vote for it, permit, it wasn't a temporary.
This is, we're calling for a special meeting, James, and you can do that, read the bylaws.
That's our bylaws, we can have a special meeting.
Yes, but it also limited us to 12 meetings a year.
We can have, we can have a special meeting anytime.
Correct.
The 12 meet, the 12 meetings, meetings, it doesn't mean anything, we can, we can have a meeting next week if we want to, if we have an issue, as long as we advertise it.
Everything you're discussing could be healed by a committee. You're talking about, you know, getting rid of the treasures report, getting rid of public input? You gotta be kidding me. That's, you know, you're telling the public they can't comment at a meeting you're trying to claim is public.
No.
That, you're raising such huge red flags that it makes me wanna vomit.
Call the question.
Dan, just second, wait, Dan, respond, then we'll call the question.
I already made a second motion.
The, the special.
Didn't have a second for it.
The, the special meeting is, is laid out on page three of the, of the bylaws, and says that we can do that at any time, it's very, it's very clear what's in there, and, and I would be very happy to, to contact the, the Journal and see if they have a way to, to get out and notice, they may do a little bit of a news story on such, such things, so I'd be happy to do that. But, I, I will second Director Rollinger's motion to call the question.
I made a substantive motion before that.
Did you have a second, Dan?
Did you have a second?
You didn't even let me call that motion.
We didn't, we were still on the first motion.
And I, I'm allowed to call a second motion before.
We had a second for the first motion, James, if you wanna, if you wanna make a motion, go for it.
I motion to retable this.
Second.
Okay, motion is made to table this item. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
No. Roll call.
To table the item, Cole.
No.
Bjorki.
No.
Driscoll.
No.
Jovek.
Yes.
Rollinger.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Mack.
No.
Vialata.
Yes.
Harris.
No.
Motion fails to table.
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor of the, Dan's original motion on this meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Before you do, who are the people that are getting invited? I want it publicly on the record.
The list is in the packet.
I want it spoken for the record.
Call the question.
Question's been called.
Second.
Okay.
Disclose what the motion is.
Excuse me, we're, we're gonna vote on this. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
What is the motion?
Call, call the question.
He said, he said to list the stakeholders, but he did not list them.
I called the question, so we gotta vote on it, there's no discussion, I called the question.
And, and help me out with keeping minutes, you called the question.
I called the question, I got a second, there is no discussion.
And you refinished the motion.
Call the question.
He said a motion of stakeholders.
The motion is, is the original motion, all, all, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
I'm, I'm gonna note that, I don't know what the motion is.
Is this to call the question?
This is to call the question, this is not the, this is to call the question.
We need a two-thirds motion.
Correct.
Yeah.
Two seconds, Mr.?
Driscoll.
Driscoll.
So, to call the question, Harris? Are we doing a roll call?
Yeah, we're doing a roll call.
Okay, so this is aye to call the question?
Correct.
And discussion?
Correct.
Aye.
Vialata.
No.
Mack.
Aye.
Williams.
No.
Rollinger.
Aye.
Jovek.
Nay.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Bjorki.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
And motion passes to call the question.
Aye goes the motion.
Now, we go to the original motion, this is to approve this meeting on June 11th, as described by Mr. Driscoll. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, this is on Driscoll's motion for the meeting.
Yes.
Mack.
Aye.
Williams.
No.
Rollinger.
Aye.
Jovek.
No.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Bjorki.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Vialata.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is number 11, approval of letter to game fish and barges riding the claim, the next amendment removal.
Motion approved.
Okay, thanks, Chairman Bjorki. This, this topic has come up most recently, I think it was at the March meetings when John Carrera, from Game and Fish was here, gave us kind of an update on the status of, you know, the dredging project at Canyon Lake, and it was potentially gonna be delayed. So, there was another discussion of the, of the dredging project at our April meeting briefly, and following that, I got together with Chairman Bjorki and Director Williams, and we thought it might be appropriate to kind of throw our, our concerns out to the Game and Fish in terms of, you know, the actions they've been taking and the long timeframe, and maybe get engaged with them a little bit more on the planning process, to be sure that the project was as successful as it could be, since it's a pretty high-profile place. So, my motion would be, you know, in that light, to approve, you know, the, or authorize, the board would authorize the, the draft letter that's in the packet to be sent to Game and Fish with the appropriate dates and time and signature on it.
Is there a second? Seconded by Steve Rollinger, he needs discussion on the motion. See, and then, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 12, board approval of Gale Holbrook Award for Elvis, Dr. Elvis Lissenede. John?
So, we had honored the late Dr. Lissenede at the hydrology conference, we were unable to actually vote on awarding him the Gale Holbrook Award, because it was not listed as an official agenda item at our last meeting. I think it's something that we ought to do, so I would put it on the agenda specifically for that purpose, and I would move that we would bestow the Gale Holbrook Award to Dr. Elvis Lissenede.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion. See, and then, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you. Item number 13, approval of advertising for legal services with RFP. John?
Okay, this is, just to preface the motion, we've been talking about advertising or putting forward an RFP for legal services, develop a contractual relationship on an as needed basis for legal services. A committee was formed, Director Vialata, myself, Director Driscoll, and our administrator Malali met, we developed this draft letter for approval, for sub, submit to, to request legal services, so my motion would be to approve the draft letter for solicitation for legal services with the appropriate dates and times, and that letter is in your package.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Linda. Any discussion? Nathan?
I guess I'm wondering what the advantage would be to the board as far as doing this, and one of the reasons why we ended up hiring Mr. Jasper was because he was well-versed on the issue that we were faced with, he was constantly in attendance, in attendance tonight, past director, all of these things have been mentioned before. The point is, is that you hire people that are going to do a good job for you with the particular issue, and I think that's in relation to any profession or, or any contractor. You, you don't necessarily want to, want to be locked in to one person, because whatever issue you might be faced with may not be what they're strong in. They may not know anything about whatever it is that you're talking to them about, and you may end up paying them a small fortune just to get them up to speed on whatever the issue is. That's exactly what we were faced with when we hired Mr. Jasper. So, we would've spent a small fortune to try to get somebody else up to speed on what the issue was, and then they could start. So, I don't know what we gain as a board by locking ourselves into one particular person. I think the way we should address this is, maybe we just take it as we need it. If we need to hire somebody for a particular issue, then we do it. And we don't lock, get locked in to somebody that might very well not have a clue what it is that we're, that we're needing them to help us with. So, that's with anything. I can tell you that in my engineering career, I've done a lot of work with water, sewer, and solid waste, and not much with roads. So, if somebody signed a contract with me and approached me with the road design, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that, because it's not what I've done, or structures, or, you know, laying out a, a train route, you know? I mean, I'm a civil engineer and an environment, environmental engineer, and there's a lot of stuff that I can do, but there's a lot of stuff I can't do. So, that's, I, I don't think we gain anything by doing this as a board. I think it's a, I think it's a foolish thing to do, I think we should just do it piecemeal as needed.
Any other discussion?
Just as a point of interest, I did reach out based on the committee that we had's request to Jay Gilverson over at the East Dakota Water Development District for some perspective, and they essentially have had two different models in the past, one they had an attorney on retainer, their retainer fee was rather minimal, but Jay said it would just guarantee that the person would answer the phone, it was $200 a year. They've gone away from that model, and now they have an on-call attorney, so when they need something, they, they have a, you know, a relationship with this guy, a captain, a guy, has an on-call basis, so that would be the identical model that we would be putting forward, you know, through solicitation via this RFP, with the stated sort of topics in mind that we would be seeking help on.
Any other discussion? Dan?
All right, part of the deal is there was a certain amount of discomfort in the way that the, this landed, where it landed, you know, what Mr. Jasper has been providing, I think, has been, well, I don't think he's called on very often, I certainly appreciate seeing him in the office or in the, at our meetings, I would hope you would intend to submit a proposal, you know, we may simply formalize what we've already got in place, which would certainly raise my comfort level, so.
My comment is, you know, while I was on the board when this, when this occurred, we had, the board actually had a woman that was voted in by the previous board to be the attorney for the water, West Dakota Water Development District Board, and we, we voted, voted instantly, it was a short-term deal, and we didn't, we didn't even contact the person that was our attorney and tell him that we, that she was out of a job. I mean, that was, that's not the way to handle, to do business, and I don't think West Dakota should, should handle business in that way. By doing an RFP, Mr. Jasper certainly, we would hope that she would, he would put a proposal in, but there might be other ones out there that, that have that same capability or maybe better, we don't know, cause we, we didn't do an RFP, so that's, that's my opinion.
I guess I wanna respond to that, as far as Sarah Frankenstein, I think, was the person you were talking about, and as far as her being out of the job, I mean, as far as I, I knew, I don't know that we ever used her.
I was, I was not on the board.
I was two years in, I'm not aware of her being involved in anything during my time, so it wasn't like, you know, she was actively involved in the board, and all of a sudden we severed the relationship, told her she couldn't do anymore, that it just, there was just nothing there. And, I mean, if, if we didn't have a discussion about an RFP for an attorney, you wouldn't even know that we had an attorney, you know, prior to Mr. Jasper coming on board, so, cause there was no involvement.
Okay, I'm in favor of this, because I think it does formalize the process, just like it does when we had Dan's RFP, that, you know, in the end, this board will make the decision who we want to retain, and this gives us the opportunity to maybe interview other people, and, and I agree too, I hope Mr. Jasper would also submit an application.
I think James, first, had his hand up.
Just so everybody's aware, even if we go through this route, we still might not be able to use the attorney we hired, due to conflict of interest with any law firm. If whoever we're in legal entanglement with, either for or pro together, they may not be able to represent us. Just so everybody's fully aware of that, with my real estate ventures, I have at least five attorneys, I have the balance to, just to make sure one doesn't have a conflict interest.
Nathan?
I think that's just another argument, not to have an RFP. If, again, if we need somebody, I mean, that's fine, if we, you know, get to know somebody or whatever through an interview process that we go through one time, so what? I mean, we may not ever use them, if we do have a need for an attorney, again, that person may not know anything about whatever issue that we're faced with, or may have a conflict of interest, or whatever. I don't know what we're gaining, again, I think we'd be better served if we have a need, we address it at that time. I mean, we're meeting every month now, so we get together, say, "Hey, we need an attorney", committee gets set up, you look for an attorney, approve the attorney, and then we're good, deal with the issue, and move on.
Can we ask Ja, Mr. Jasper, for an opinion on this? At the time, we were at a two-month meeting schedule, the deadline came in, and we didn't have time to meet even for the, for the next meeting. Between the next meeting and the meeting that we approved him, we, we were supposed to go December 6th to talk with the state, and to do that, there had to be a, you know, there wasn't been enough time to run through RFPs, so.
We, we already had an attorney at that point.
She couldn't make it, though.
I actually, you know, and one of the things I would put in our RFP is that they must show up. I mean, this group meets every month now, we need to be able to say, "Oh, I know who that is," and, so, I'd like to have that.
Right, the previous RFP was violated.
Tom?
I'd like to call the question.
All right.
One more comment, the current RFP does not require.
Have another comment after you call the question.
Question's been called.
It's been seconded yet, it's up.
I seconded, I seconded, it's a point of.
All in favor of calling the question, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Is it three?
No.
I'd like to note that Mr. Jasper had his hands up for, hands up for quite a while, I don't know, to do that, and then pushing through votes.
Roll call. Okay, roll call.
Without the knowledge of the RFPs.
Call the question, roll call.
I was just referring to.
Yeah, call the question, and roll call, please.
Cole?
Call the question, aye.
Yes. Bjorki.
Yes.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Jovek.
No.
Rollinger.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Mack.
Yes.
Vialata.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
After the aye.
So, the motion on the floor is to approve advertised for legal services for, for an RFP for, as described by Mr. Cole. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
All. Roll call please.
Roll call, roll call to approve the RFP. Rawlinger?
Yes.
Jovick?
No.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Yerkey?
Yes.
Code?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Viellata?
No.
Mack?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Motion carries.
Next item.
Next item, fourteen. Establish deadline for submission of agenda items to be the COV Close Business Day of Monday, one week before the Tuesday meeting day. Mr. Driscoll?
This is really intended as a friendly suggestion and not really intended to be, you know, any point of contention or anything, but I put it in as an agenda item so that we could go down it as such if it would be appropriate. But, you know, the la, this last time around, the notice came out to have your agenda items, and it was something pretty close to two weeks in advance of the, the meeting, which is, it was just started two weeks in advance, which was just a little more than two weeks after the next one. I wondered if it might just streamline things for all of us if we kind of had a, a standing arrangement in place. And so, I had thrown out, you know, Monday, basically a day and a week ahead of the, the meeting as, as a possibility. One thing that it might lead to would be, I don't know if, if Tuesday, a week in advance of the meeting, might be a good date for a standing arrangement for the executive committee, where you wouldn't have to shop for a, a date, you'd just know that that's when it would occur and for, perhaps could plan for it. So, I guess with that as, as background, I'll just make a motion that that be a, a standard way of doing things, and at least that way we could, could discuss this section.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Steve, just before. Say, Dan?
That's what I was going to do.
Do you have any issue with what's being proposed as far as your roles?
Any history?
Any, any problem with what's being proposed for, for time type table?
I guess I would, I would like it, that to be the minimum that, that gives me, because we had the executive board meeting, and I'd like to get the packet out by Thursday before because it has to get on the website. That gives me basically a day to get the packet ready, so it's a little bit tight. But I don't know that that restricts us from trying to get a little earlier too. I know Director Mack came up with a schedule before, and that seemed to work well.
And my concern would be from, more from your perspective, getting, getting the, getting the packet put together and that sort of thing.
Yeah, because it's got to get on the website, and they have forty-eight hour delay at times. So, I guess to make it short, I'd, I'd like to have a little bit more time than that maybe.
What was your suggestion?
Friday before, the Friday of the week before.
The motion maker.
From, from my standpoint, you know, it really doesn't matter. I'd like to just have something set so that we kind of know. I mean, most of the time, you know, it's easy to have them in by Friday. I kind of wondered, you know, from the standpoint of an executive meeting, you know, I see the emails going around about, seems, seems like there's a lot of chasing, and I wonder if it would streamline your process to say, let's have a, a set time for the, for the executive. But I'm just kind of throwing it out on the table. I'm entirely open to whatever consensus the group would come up with.
James, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a couple. First, the executive board's job was never to set the agenda, never has been. Second, the executive board only met four, five times a year. They didn't even meet every meeting. The only reason for the executive board to meet was to put off fires or hear about projects that were coming in or had a delay or a problem. There is no reason for the board to be meeting every month for an executive board because there's got to be almost nothing to do. Setting the agenda was never that item. Actually, it's the chairman's item with Dan to just write the agenda.
Well, I, there's a comment, I, you know, I've been involved with this just through a few mo, few meetings, but I, I think it's been very valuable for, for us to get together and go over that agenda.
Right, but telling directors they can't put items on the agenda isn't for the executive board to vote. Usually, we just give them an agenda item, and if somebody doesn't like it, then we kick it off as a board, not an executive.
We're not, we're not voting on anything.
They're, you're moving up projects up and down the list and didn't want to put some on.
Well, the only projects that came up, you know, if a director submits a project, they need to have information so we can make a decision on where, where it should go on the agenda.
Right, right. There, there's stuff on this agenda the last couple of months that, there was no information, and it was put on there by the executive. The executive board doesn't need, need to meet monthly, nor do they put agenda items on the agenda. If they want an agenda item on, they just send it to you or to Dan to be put on the agenda.
Well, as your chairman, I, I would, I like to have these meetings because it gives us the chance to.
Well, I'm sure you do, it costs people money.
Steve?
Actually, he's correct. The Robert's Rules Order says the chairman, so the chairman decides, that's Dan. Executive boards decide, they meet, not you. So, the executive board has decided this, that's when we're going to meet. Dan does agenda, it comes here, we as a group decide the agenda. Dan puts it on there, and then we decide whether we keep it on there or not. I mean, you're correct. It is Dan that does that. Administrative, we, we, executive board meets whenever we choose. We have chosen to do that.
I guess being on the executive board, we weren't deciding what gets put on or not on the agenda. It was more the order. For example, we wanted Dr. Katzenstein to be early on because he was here. That way, he could speak and then leave. But we weren't saying that, no, we're not going to put this item on, or yes, we're going to put this. Whatever was brought forward wound up on the agenda.
No, there was items that were moved from agenda down to chairman's comments that you guys intentionally did. You guys don't have.
No, that's not correct.
Really?
The item was, excuse me. The item was submitted, and it was, we were trying to decide where, where it should go because there was no documentation whatsoever on what this item was about.
He said agenda item. He didn't say chairman's comments.
Well, if you're going to have an agenda item, you need to have information available for us to look at and the rest of the board members to look at.
Correct.
You showed me where number fourteen, there's a form to go with it.
There was absolutely nothing on that item.
Point of order. We're having an argument, that's, we're out of order.
Yeah, let's stop. This is not.
No, no, no.
You don't get to argue, James.
Well, you're not the chairman either.
I agree with you.
And neither are you. You don't argue.
Where is my paperwork for number fourteen then?
Every week, he's got to put a stop to this, Dan. He can't do that.
You just said if it doesn't come with anything, it doesn't go on the agenda. So, where is the paperwork for number fourteen? Where's my paper trail? Where's my documentation?
Number fourteen is black and white, right in front of us. How can you miss? What is there to miss? Specifically, what, what?
I'm arguing the semantics. You kicked items off for not having a paper trail, yet you put items on.
Point of order again, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Directors can speak, only when recognized by the chair.
Correct.
I think we've had enough discussion on this.
We don't have to listen to this repeated interruption of people that are inclined to interrupt. So, at this point in time, I've had my hand up for a bit with a question.
Go ahead.
I would ask the question, would it be useful to the executive committee? It sounds like you kind of prefer to meet, to have a set date to where you don't have to, you know, fish for a date, you know? Tuesday would be a good one, a week in advance, or if there's a, a better time. But to me, it would just streamline the process if we had things.
My answer to that is, I mean, we've, there's four of us, and, and people are, are working and have schedules, so we, it's, it's worked out. We, you know, we pick a time that, that works for everybody, so to set us exact, exact time, exact data, this doesn't work to get people working. So, I think it's been working out pretty, pretty good as far as scheduling these meetings.
Well, and just for everybody's information, the executive board was meeting on Thursdays ahead of your suggested Mondays, so, and then everybody knows that they could still submit an agenda item, and Dan can get it in the packet.
The point of order, by the way, with the executive meeting committee's not on here. We're not, this, I'm not supporting discussion.
Let's see. We had a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry. Were you recognized? You just talked about.
I call a point of order. I call a point of order, James. If you don't know what it is, get the Robert's Rules Order and learn it. You have no freaking clue what it is.
I have.
You're not. You're always.
Are you the chairman?
I call a point of order. I'm not the chairman. I call a point of order.
I'm, let's get this meeting under control here. There's a motion on the floor, and, and there was a discussion about the time on there. And do you want to amend your motion to, to Friday before that?
I'd probably be inclined to withdraw the motion. It sounds like, yeah, I just wanted to streamline things, and it sounds like that wouldn't really, you know, streamline anything for the executive committee, and, you know, I can live with it the way it is.
Okay.
But the, as, as Linda had pointed out, you know, the last time it came around with, you know, an executive committee meeting on Thursday, and you're quite a ways out in front of the meeting, you know? We're pretty close to two weeks out, and it doesn't give you a lot of time to formulate agendas, but, you know.
I suggest you just leave it the way it is.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. No action on fourteen, I guess. Fifteen, designate next meeting location. I guess that's you.
I guess it's me because I found this location, and based on our previous decision in June, looks like we're going to move the meeting to the outdoor campus if we vote to do that, just because that location can better accommodate the number of people that will be invited. So, I will make a motion to have the June meeting at the outdoor campus.
Second.
I second.
Seconded by Dan.
Mr. Chair, I would like to do a substitute motion. I would like to have a meeting on June 11th at the outdoor campus at 1:00 P.M.
Okay. Would that be agreeable?
Yes, I, I just didn't. Thank you.
Be agreeable to the motion maker and the second, versus Dan. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Any discussion on the motion?
This is a substitute motion?
Well, he, I guess, I guess it wasn't really a substitute motion. Does anybody second that?
No one's seconded it.
No one's seconded.
And they amended it.
She amended her motion to include the 1:00 P.M., so the motion is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, 1:00 P.M., working people like myself will not be able to be there in the capacity of a director or a taxpayer. And I think it goes back to our previous discussion, that meeting, it seems like it's being lined up to accommodate governmental entities, people that want taxpayer funding, but it's being held at a time when taxpayers aren't going to be able to attend. So, and I won't be able to attend either. So, I, I don't appreciate the time change, don't appreciate the, the intent, and I, I don't, I guess I vigorously oppose this. So, I don't oppose the venue, but I vigorously oppose the, the intent and the time.
Any other discussion?
Seeing all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rose, same sign?
Nay.
Roll call please.
Roll call for the June meeting, 1:00 P.M. Code?
Yes.
Yerkey?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Jovick?
No.
Rawlinger?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Mack?
Yes.
Viellata?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Chairman doesn't have any comments? Any items from the directors? James?
I'd like to point out that conflict of interest was broken twice tonight by Chairman Driscoll, who specifically wants him to invite his employer to a special meeting. And that should have been noticed. His, his employer is directly being invited.
Any other items from the directors?
Yeah, I do. I, doesn't seem like you're taking that seriously, so I'm not quite sure why. I guess, from my perspective, I think you should be looking at that and asking yourself if that was appropriate. The other thing that I would like to note is, it seems like there's a group think, thing going on here. We, we saw several votes tonight that pretty much went right down the line, exactly the same. I know that several of you came in with the assistance of the Rapid City Journal and believe that, you know, we are, people like myself are evil and have some amount of grudge or something. From my perspective, that's not the case. I would encourage you to be free thinkers. I saw at least one of you at a meeting recently that I would not have expected you to see you at. I would mention that we are compiling just by virtue of our voting record and recordings here that we've got, we're getting quite a history on everybody as far as where they stand on things, so I'm proud of my voting record and the things that I've said. I hope some of you that are going the other way feel the same way. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Matt?
My, my comment is, I'm wondering what the definition of a stakeholder is. And I think I brought that up in our committee, and, but I know that there are people that do that. The stakeholder for me is the taxpayer, and the people that were being invited are the people that we'd be spending our tax dollars with for projects. So, there may be, I, I'm just not real clear on what the stakeholder definition would be. Is it the entities that Director Driscoll brought up, or is it our constituents? And I, you know, that's basically the reason why I would have liked to have a more discussion on that, that topic, but I'm, that's all I have to say.
Okay. James?
I have a question before I say anything. Linda, do you work at Western Dakota Tech as well?
No.
Did you formally?
No.
Same person. Okay. Thank you.
Are you wondering why I asked them to be added to the list?
I am, because they don't have any.
Well, I thought if the School of Mines was invited because of their research capabilities, Western Dakota Tech is also striving to do more environmental work, and I just thought, invite them, and then it's up to them if they're interested in coming.
Do they have environmental studies?
Sure, they have an environmental program.
That's fair enough. That's fair enough. That, that clarifies everything for me. Thank you very much.
Dan?
I guess since Bob asked the question, when I think of stakeholders, typically in the discussions, it tends to be various, what we refer to as agencies or entities that are involved in the water-related projects. You know, the, the public, of course, is always welcome at our meetings. We typically don't see a lot of the public. You know, they, they can certainly consider themselves stakeholders. If you happen to be an irrigator on Rapid Creek, you could say, well, I'm a, I'm a stakeholder in the Rapid Creek water issues. You know, I, I don't know exactly how you define it, but I tend to think of, of the stakeholders as being different than the taxpayers for the most part. The other thing I would add, this, this list is not intended to be restrictive. Anybody who can think of anybody, everything we do is entirely open to the public. Anybody who can think of anybody, everything we do is entirely open to the public. You may think of, you know, other entities out there who have not been invited. And if you think of them, please pass them along. It's open to everybody who wants to come through the door.
Thanks, Dan.
That's, yeah, what do you have?
And I guess, you know, I agree with Dan's description of the stakeholders and the public is welcome. And I know the one o'clock time can be an issue for some people, but the public and the taxpayers, some people work at night, some people work during the day, and others are retired. But I think for our primary stakeholders that are in the water-related fields, an afternoon and an extended afternoon meeting should work out very well.
I, you know, this, we're going to do this for one week. I mean, we're going to go back to our business schedule and, you know, our, our thought was that, you know, a lot of these stakeholders, people that are, are involved in what we do, I mean, water-related issues. And one of the ways, by discussing whatever issues that are out there, they may have issues that we certainly want, they'll want to do duplication of the work. So, we don't know what, what a lot of these organizations are even looking at. And maybe they're not spending money, I don't know, but we'll find out. So, anyway, that's, that's my thought.
I just have one more item.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The July meeting location, the School of Mines basically has penciled us in for this same room again for July. And I just wanted to make sure that that was everybody else's understanding. And the only reason they wanted to go up to July is they're doing some remodeling and that should be completed. And then there may be better classrooms that we can use for our meetings. So, I guess, you know, is this our intent to continue to have the other meetings here at School of Mines?
Only if you're done.
Yeah, yes, yes.
My other comment I made when I came in today is something we should take good consideration of since our meeting is not at a building that's solely for the purpose of Western Dakota Water Development District. It would even be useful at the next meeting at Outdoor Campus West is that we should have at least a small yard sign that says, "Western Dakota Water Development District", with an arrow on it. It wouldn't be costly to do, probably less than twenty dollars.
That's a great idea.
Barry is always a gentleman stationed at the front door, you can ask him what it is.
That's at the outdoor?
At the outdoor campus.
Oh.
They're secured, they're all the time.
Right, but here on this campus...
Well, that's different.
Right, it'd be useful to keep for the future.
Good, good idea. All right, Dan?
So, I have a question on the, the meeting list of people. So, Director Driscoll, you're going to give me...
I'll get with you within, within the next couple of days with, with the emails that I, that I have.
And I also have a, like I said, I compiled the people that signed in, should it go to them too, or?
If you have a list that you send through normally, absolutely. I mean, that's, we, that would be our constituents. We want to let everybody know. I'll, I'll contact, you know, somebody at the journal and see if there's somebody that could put some sort of a blurb in there that let them know there's something a little different going on. You know, maybe they'd want to do a short story on it or, or something. But we want to let everybody know to the extent possible.
Okay, sounds good. Dan, do you have some items?
I've got one more item if I could interrupt.
Yes, we have.
You know, as far as the, the future, one thing we might want to consider, I know the, the outdoor campus had been talked about, but they have to close their doors at nine P M. I think our track record will be such, we're at eight twenty-five and I think we'd probably made it by nine the last time. We can see how things go, but that facility's quite a bit better suited than a classroom like this. And we might want to look that direction in the future.
Well, the other thing, we could start at five thirty, too, I mean, just move it up half an hour if that's a problem.
What was the cost difference, just curious?
There's no cost.
No cost at the outdoor campus?
Is that available, like always when we need it?
Well, you would, I, I think you, I think you would be able to basically book it routinely unless anybody else would have a standing arrangement. But my understanding was it had been looked at and somebody said, well, it has, you have to be out of there by nine o'clock.
Right. I, I did explore the option with John, I can never pronounce his last name. And he gave me the possibilities. And at that time, there were possible issues if we wanted to keep the second Tuesdays. Now, that may have changed since then.
Yeah, it would happen at different days, wherever called.
Well, I'll be, I'll be confirming with their schedule or tomorrow to let them know we're, we're confirmed on. So, I will check and see if they have standing arrangements for that date or not.
But we're going to meet here on July for a July meeting and then I guess we can decide what we want to do going forward.
I think we should call that our plan for now, I think.
June is confirmed, right? We have a room there?
Yeah.
And we make the meeting time and...
Yep.
Yes, June is confirmed, I'm just going to let them know that it is locked in now.
Very good, Dan, do you have some items?
I have a few things here. Galen wanted me to just update you that on the Canyon Lake sampling, the USGS sampling. He said, we will sam, we will be sampling tomorrow and again in June. And this will basically close out the agreement. So, they'll invoice us for the remaining amount in that. And so, probably I would guess they're going to propose some additional sampling they're going to want to do after the dredging. He will present the results at the July meeting. Yeah, he does say here a last for an extension. Then I sent out an email regarding the budget and just wanted to keep that on the radar. We need some, something, I need something probably by July twenty-third to get all the legal notices out for the, and we're going to keep August as our budget meeting, which we decided to do. And then I got an email from Ron Bengs, an interstate engineer on the Green Valley Sanitary Project. He was in here. Some of you directors were around and he said he will be, I circulated that email, they're asking for a letter of recommendation. But it's not urgent, but I just wanted to mention that. And then, please give me your checkstrokes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Dan. Have we ever written a letter of recommendation in the past? Because what they're asking for is a financial letter of recommendation, right?
I, not while I've been here, we haven't.
I don't think we've ever had.
Not from my knowledge.
They're going to the D E N R in March of twenty twenty. Says...
Not, not, not since I've been on board yet, we haven't had a recommendation for anything. Dan?
Could we spend a quick question, a minute or two on, as far as the budget process? Do we need to have specific projects and associated budgets in place? Or do we make estimates of some amount of our funding that would be available for projects that may come up during the course of the year?
Both, it can be estimates. For example, last year we had a proposal from H two E and from Crossover for the DNA studies. So, we put that in, those were specific numbers. But we also had a forty thousand dollar...
Placeover.
When I said last year, that's this year's budget. Yeah, we had a contingency fund, forty thousand. And we estimate travel and things like that. So, it's pretty loosey-goosey how we do it.
So, if we boil it down, if, if we know of specific items that we might think are high likelihood items, we should be, you know, trying to firm up budgets, proposed budgets as quickly as possible. And if such things are not necessarily on the radar, we can go with kind of the contingency approach.
I think, I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so are there any items from the public?
I do have a couple of brief ones.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm Barry Buxton, D R A Clean Water Alliance. August twenty-eighth at the Alex Johnson. It's one of the federal nuclear regulatory agencies for three days appearance on Louis Burdak since they have to kind of restart the whole process to get their mining thing going. And additionally, the nation of Kazakhistan, I believe, is another major producer of uranium. So, ban all uranium mining in their countries because of what happened in their country, because of the uranium waste. That additional pressure on Louis Burdak, because they're one of the last ones in the world. It's, you can't go to Colorado because Colorado will limit restrictions on. And so, we can have this hearing, the additional pressure, the N C two beach mining out there.
What, what was the date on that again?
August twenty-eighth. And I think you'll, I'm not sure if this is the one you can give public comment on. There's one coming up where you can't give a public comment, which could be a pretense. That may be the one for the, the... Well, anyway, that's what's going on there.
What was the second one you signed?
Well, there's a mini WACA water conference and Clean Water's been asked to help operate that. They've set up a camp at Bear Meats. So, they need volunteers to do things, that's what I know. But it's an international kind of thing.
Since you're, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look on public television of the...
Oh, where we go from here, maybe?
Yeah, where we go from here, did anybody get a chance to see that?
We were there.
Oh, that's right, you guys were there. I guess we didn't report on it, now you guys can report on it, but I did have a, I did watch that and it was very informative, Dr. Kenner was on there.
Right.
Yeah, with your organization, a fellow from... Windridge Reservation and Jim, Jim, Jim Stone. Dr. Stone was there, it was very, very well done and hopefully...
And there was a follow-up discussion afterwards, they stopped filming, it's like in their time frame.
It was very informative. Yeah, very informative.
And I hope isn't, that's just the first one.
Yeah.
Did you want a comment on that?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Comment that I took away was the most prominent for me was that the Native American population has a way of looking at water that we do not in a scientific way. And it looks like it's really very difficult to make that mesh. Science and religion are tough to match. But it was interesting to hear their perspective on the issues of community making the decision. And so, I think it was on PBS and you probably can just Google it to come up with that.
I would imagine you can find it online.
That was about an hour, about an hour long.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, there's supposed to be a link on the website.
Right.
Anyways, if anybody's interested in seeing that, I'd sure recommend it, it's pretty good information.
I suggest we pull about that mining letter we wrote a year or two ago.
The mining letter?
Yeah.
Oh, on the uranium? Must be in your archive, I assume.
I imagine we should put a new date on it.
Dave find that, Dan?
I'll try. If you have another comment, you.
You don't have a copy, I don't either.
James had a... Yeah, I wrote it, I wrote it.
Well, if you got, put this email, so I don't, I don't have it.
It should be in the minutes.
Should be in minutes.
Yeah.
Was that like a year ago or?
Almost two, almost two.
Two years ago, okay. That'd be nice to, I do remember that, I just don't, I don't...
Yes, he, I agree with you on a lot of stuff.
Another comment from the public.
So, this is, Ms. Francis, full mind again, I just have a couple of questions. Rapid Creek Homeowners Association, probably should be added to that list. They usually come to a lot of us for the special meeting, I didn't see it on. The attachment, it mentioned in the, in the meeting packet that online, that there was going to be attachments. There weren't attachments in the meeting packet. So, I just, I want to submit ideas and that guidance isn't available on the website version of the package. I just have a couple of questions.
Who is the Rapid Creek Homeowners Association, where?
At Hoyt is the chair of that.
Who?
At Hoyt.
Oh, at Hoyt, so where are they located, like upstream somewhere?
It's a, it's a bunch of the homeowners, that's...
Where, where is, where is their boundaries, is it west of Rapid City or?
No, it's West Andes, though.
I think that's where the Rapid Creek homeowners association is.
Oh, I hadn't heard that before.
All the way out.
So...
But they usually come to meetings like this, at least at this. So, I'd be worried sending the emails and... I'm curious as to whether or not only the ideas presented at that meeting will be considered and what the mechanism for that is. So, if we present an idea at that meeting, then we have two more meetings, assuming that a board member wants to put a project on the agenda, right? So, we're looking at three months out? And I'm just making sure that I see the, the projects that I should...
Well, if there, I mean, if there's some project that comes forward out of this meeting, I mean, you know, they submitted proposals. So, it would be, it would take a couple of meetings, yes, before we'd act on it. Is that what you're asking?
Right, so, there's not going to be decisions at that meeting?
Can't make that on the agenda.
There would be...
No, there's not going to be decisions at the meeting.
One of the reasons I was trying to look at the attachments was because it wasn't clear to me whether or not budgets were required.
We don't even know if there's going to be a project come out of this meeting, quite honestly.
Yeah, it's...
Yes, Dan?
If I might try to clarify, the, the attachments that are intended to be attached to this email, I don't think it came through clearly. But, but one will be this blank form, a project idea form that you can fill out. So, you can put your idea on that. The other attachment will be this one that I had already circulated for a comprehensive Rapid Creek water quality sort of assessment. And, and it, on it, it says specifically, it's in your packet. But if somebody has something that would fall within that guideline, bring that idea also. I mean, the idea is to, you know, there could be many things related to Rapid Creek water quality that could fit. You know, we had a couple of these earlier, you know, DNA tracking and pathogen type. How, how, what are these pathogens? Well, anyhow, tho, those things are but a couple of what could be bigger pictures, you know? Canyon lake water quality, et cetera, et cetera. So, the other thing, the intent is not to bring proposals with budgets. The intent is to bring just ideas, brainstorming, get ideas on the table. And then we can basically start chewing on them. People can bring proposals anytime, but I think my intent has been, let's get the ideas flowing and let's just get a big cross-section of ideas and then see, you know, that can help us begin to prioritize. I don't think any of us know exactly where it will go. So, you know, if you have specific, bring your ideas and be ready to have proposals at any time. I mean, it...
I guess everything I do is one of them. So, the number of ideas that could be put forward?
We're going to have to have a time span.
There's other organizations that might, you know, we're, we're a small, we're a small ship in the ocean in terms of, we don't have that much money. But there's other organizations that are stakeholders that we're inviting that, that may be able to fund one of your projects too. If you've got a proposal that's, you know, a good proposal and they're interested in it. It's not just us necessarily.
Well, so that actually brings another question that I have. And that is, are you requiring cost share for... And that is, are we requiring cost share proposals that come and fund the board?
Are we? Well, we have... We've cost shared projects, but we've also funded projects with Adam at the School of Mines, who's fully funded.
I know, I've found the benefit of that, but I also then... It appears as if cost share is important to the board.
Mainly because we don't have, you know, we don't have a lot of money. And if we can...
It is not within the... As a professor at the school, I can't document cost share from the school without it saying that you need it to be. So I just want to point that out as if that's...
My opinion is if we're doing a project in the city of Rapid City, for example, it's water quality, project we're doing. Really, the primary benefit center from that was is people that hooked up the Rapid City water system and not somebody from Hill City or Keystone that are paying taxes to fund this. So the city of Rapid City, in my opinion, should be a partner in these projects.
I'm not saying that's a...
That's just an example.
I'm saying that the school could also be a partner, and we could show cost share on things. But it has to be documented that the board requires cost share.
Well, I think it's project-specific, you know, you got... We don't have a rule of thumb or anything, or a direct rule. I mean... We can cross share.
One last thing, sorry. I've been talking about this board a few different times, and I just want to thank you, Ashra, for that, as I just received. No doubt, some of this funding in the projects that we have done in the past have contributed. It is in my tender dossier, and so thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for attending the meeting. Chuck?
Chuck D. Estwood. There's two points. Number one, I would suggest we also look at inviting Black Hills State. They do have a campus right outside of Rapid City, or in Rapid City. I'm not sure where it is. But my basis for it is when my son was getting his degree in Black Hills State. I'm a tech grad, so it hurts to say that, but anyway. They did some work that he was involved in, doing some water sampling and studies related to home state science. But they do have some interest in this area. So I would suggest that they be notified as well.
Do you have a contact for that? Did you get to Dan? Somebody get ahold of him?
I can try, yes, I will.
If you could do that.
Either the chemistry or the biology department is what he was working with.
Okay. Well, if you have a contact, just give it to Dan, we'll get it on the list. And then you had another?
The other comment was, I did have my hand up earlier because I was gonna try to give you some history related to how attorneys have been involved in this board. But this one, I guess, I threw.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate you coming. We certainly hope that you will submit a proposal to us for consideration.
One last director item, if I may?
Yes.
I will attend, plan to attend the Black Hills R C and D meeting, I believe, is May 30. So folks will know that we'll have somebody in attendance there. It's important to stay in touch with these groups.
Thank you. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by James II. Seconded by Bob. All in favor of the motion indicate the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody, for coming.